I call this meeting the North Adams City Council Order for September 11th. This meeting is being recorded. Will the clerk please take the roll?
Bonna.
Here.
Buddington.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Harpen.
Here.
Hopkins.
Here.
LaForest.
Here.
Lamb.
Here.
Moran.
Here.
Wilkinson.
Here.
You have nine present.
Please stand for a moment of silence and especially on this day, remember those of victims And the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for Need approval of the minutes from August 28th?
Motion to approve.
Second. Harpen and is it Lamb?
Either of those.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Minutes pass. Paper number 11,682, Communication Submitted by Counselor Harpen Requesting Consideration of a Stipend for Retirement Board Members. Without objection, we'll file the communication and move to the next communication. This was in City Council August 28th and was voted to postpone to September 11th meeting. To the next communication, which is paper number 11,682-1, Communication Submitted by Counselor Harpen Regarding a Stipend for the Retirement Board Members. Motion to file the communication and we will move to the order unless Counselor, you do want to say anything on that or you want to just wait till we get to the order?
I can wait till we get to the order.
Okay. All right. Paper number 11,682-1, An Order Accepting the Provisions of Massachusetts General Law is Chapter 32, Section 6 Regarding a Stipend for the Retirement Board. We have need a motion to adopt?
I would like to make a motion to adopt and to amend the order.
I think we would need to adopt first, so we need to adopt to at least get it into discussion then we can amend it after.
Okay.
So to start, we need a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt.
Second. Second by Lamb or Buddington. And discussion. So now, if you wish to amend or make an amendment?
Yeah, I just would like to amend that because there was a section that was missing. It should actually read Chapter 32, Section 20, Subsection 6. So I am just adding in Section 20.
So after where it says Chapter 32, it will be comma, Section 20.
Yes.
Correct?
I'll second that.
Second. Any discussion on the amendment? Not hearing any? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? The amendment is passed, so right now we will be making, we're discussing the motion with the amendment. Any discussion? Yes, Counselor Buddington.
Seems like waste, but I'm going to state my ambivalence because it's, I agree that it's good to compensate people for their time, but we just have so many boards and commissions, some of which do really substantial work, that don't get compensated. I wish we could be consistent across the board. I recognize that this is perfectly fair in what it asks for, though.
Thank you. Other counselors? Counselor Wilkinson.
I was all ready to vote and say fine with this because I believe people should be compensated for their time, especially when they're doing mostly volunteer work. But it was brought to my attention, I don't know anything about it, but I was for this because it didn't cost the city any money and they had polled their membership of the retirement community and they were in favor of it. But I was told tonight, and I will ask the mayor through the chair if I might, I was told, I was told tonight that this does affect the city budget. And if that's the case, then I don't know. So if I can through the chair.
Does this affect the city budget at all?
My understanding is this comes out of the assessment, so it would increase the assessment to cover the.
Could you explain that? What do you mean by the assessment?
So within the budget, we're assessed a certain amount annually and I didn't, I'm sorry, I didn't bring a copy of the budget with me to, to the retirement, to the city share of the retirement contribution. This would be over and above that.
And what's the impact to the city budget?
That would depend on the level of the assessment, but given the range between 3,000 and 4,500, it would be between 15,000 and 22,500 a year.
Okay, I'm seeing some shaking heads in the audience. I guess I'll be as bold as to ask, where do you stand on this?
I'm agnostic.
Counselor Harpen.
Yeah, I just want to read my communication that I sent out to the counselors this week. So I sent out a memo, another communication because there was a request for a polling of the membership, so I just wanted to give that information to my fellow counselors. So the communication reads, Dear fellow counselors attached, you will find an order for a stipend for the North Adams Retirement Board in which I respectfully request your approval. As requested, after the June 26th meeting, the retirement administrator conducted a survey to the membership regarding approval of such stipend, which indicates a 46% response rate and 83% of the membership in favor of the stipend. Their survey was completed over a five-week period, which provided ample time to the membership to respond. In addition, each completed survey was anonymous and opened, they were all opened at the same time at a board meeting on August 21st. I also gave a name to an actuary at PERC if any of the counselors wanted to call and, you know, discuss how this flows through the portfolio and to the city of North Adams and how it hits its budget. So I did provide that. I am not an actuary, but I did speak to him as well. And he provided some information, which I gave you today, about the appropriation. So basically, from my understanding, the total cost percent increase is something that is decided upon and it's something that they decide upon for two years. So the next time this will be looked at, I believe will be in 2020, if I'm not mistaken. So next year, the appropriation will be the same. The total cost percent increase, which is your very last column, is 4.3%. So that will be the percent increase from the year prior. So that is something that has already been agreed upon, that will remain the same. This gets looked at every two years, so it could change. But they do generally, in talking to the actuary, they do generally try to keep the percentage the same. And as you can see, the percentage that they're looking forward to through 2029 is about this 4.4%.
Any other members? Any other counselors? Counselor LaForest.
So I guess there is an unclear answer to where the stipend actually comes from. And I'm concerned that we have, you know, a massive unfunded liability for the pension system, currently $20 million. And that doesn't include our unfunded liabilities for OPEB. And this is a significant problem that affects every community across the state. And my understanding is that these unfunded liabilities are 240% of the assets on hand. It's a massive amount of money and I understand that the retirement board works very hard, but they also have an outsourced financial officer that researches and provides information to them. And so I guess I don't understand, again, is the stipend, the membership approved overwhelmingly to approve this or would approve this per se if it were within their purview. But I guess I don't understand, is the money for the stipend coming from the taxpayers in North Adams? Or is the money for this stipend coming from the investment, from the investments? Because the stock market's doing really well right now, but it's going to correct itself at some point. And then who's on the hook for, you know, for this amount of money? And then this also does open up, you know, frankly, I know Mass General Law specifically allows for a stipend for a retirement board, but again, what of all of the other, you know, boards and commissions in the city, you know, to Counselor Buddington's point? So I guess I would like a clear answer, you know, as to where this comes from. And then, is it also true that the retirement board sets its own stipend within the range permitted by Mass General Law?
That is my understanding, but we may be corrected on that. But it would be between 3,000 to 4,500. So if we approve this, we're not approving a figure, we're just approving them that they can have a stipend between 3,000.
So again, my concern is, is this coming out of the taxpayer's pocket or is this coming out of investment profits?
Counselor Lamb.
I'm going to echo Counselor LaForest on that because when we initially had this conversation, my sense was that this was coming directly out of the funds made on the investment itself. It didn't seem like this was, and that's why we sent it back specifically for a vote from the membership, because that felt like the most appropriate thing to do since it's money that essentially is owned by that population. With that, and also with the fact that we wouldn't actually set the rate itself, that feels odd since we have to vote on other budgetary items that, like we, you know, we have to approve even our own in the budget technically. And we would not be approving this. And if it is coming out of the taxpayer dollars, that feels odd to me. But I know that also Counselor Harpen did speak to the folks directly, so I'm wondering if she could speak to that. Because I did not get a chance to call that number, so I'm wondering if.
Yeah, and that's why I left that number out there because, you know, I am not an actuary. I can look at this and tell you the costs are going to be, your normal costs, which is your first column here, is where your expense is going to be. This is not $15,000 that is going to hit the budget of North Adams next year or the year after. It gets rolled into the portfolio and then the percentage that is appropriated to the city of North Adams, the McCann School and the Housing Authority is calculated through this total cost percentage increase that is done each year. So they determine what that percentage is going to be and then they back into the appropriation. Included in that backing into are your, is going to be the increase in expenses for the stipends.
The way you worded that, you said it won't be $15,000 this year or the next year. Does that mean at some point, maybe?
Um.
Because it sounds like as the percentage is increased, you know, 10 years from now, is it then 15,000? So I mean, you know, we would have to consider, and even if it's a little bit now, even if it's a small amount as we vote this and if this takes effect right away, it could have an effect on our current budget, which we've already passed, so we do have to consider that. You know, depending on how much discussion we want to get into tonight, it may make sense to refer this to public, I'm sorry, Finance Committee and see there to work out some other answers. I'm just throwing that out there, but if it is affecting our budget, it does seem like something that should go to Finance Committee.
All I can offer is this appropriation sheet that was given to me and basically showing that the percentage of increase is pretty much the same in what they forecast through 2030. So that's what I can offer.
Counselor Wilkinson and Counselor LaForest.
I thought this was pretty cut and dried, but after this last 15-minute discussion, there seems to be a lot of gray areas that I just don't have the answer for. I mean, if it was cut and dried, as I said, I was all for this, no problem whatsoever. But there seems to be a lot of questions out there right now, so I don't have an issue sending it to committee. I'm sure the retirement board would like to get this over when done with and who knows? It could very shortly. But I hate to vote on something when I still have a question in the back of my mind.
And that's why I left the number for the actuary.
So currently on the floor is a motion to adopt this, so I don't know if we want to amend that. Where, who made the motion over there?
I think Counselor Harpen made the motion.
Counselor Harpen. Counselor Lamb.
So they're, so just throwing out there. So Counselor Harpen, you made the motion, so.
Yeah, I guess I'm just, you know, I guess I'm a little frustrated because we went through this in June and this is not directly hitting the city of North Adams budget. This is a board that is autonomous and is not part of the city of North Adams. They are the North Adams Retirement Board on their own. There is an appropriation that hits the city budget and that is determined by the board. Okay? It is not directly, this is not going to directly change the budget of $15,000 next year or the year after. It's being appropriated into the portfolio. But we can certainly discuss this in the Finance Committee. I do not have a problem with that. But it was asked that the membership be, you know, go out and take a survey of the membership. That was done and 83% of them were in favor of it. I also would just like to make a few other points that were made back in June. This is a board that acts as a fiduciary for 65 million dollar fund. Each board member is responsible to file a personal yearly financial report. They're also required to have training, so many trainings each year. I think it's six credits that they have to get each year in which they have to actually take time out of work. These are, you know, long training sessions, usually two to three days. So we have a lot, we have some professionals on this board, we have lawyers, we have accountants, real estate people that have been on this board for quite some time and have a lot of knowledge of the board. So I think that's very important. 14 of 16 retirement systems in western Massachusetts pay a stipend to the retirement board. It appears to be a best practice within our region to do this. So, you know, these are the things I can offer. If you want to send it to Finance, we can send it to Finance, but, you know, I don't know what else, you know, to say, but maybe someone from the retirement board can.
So we still have counselors, so Counselor LaForest and Counselor Buddington.
So I want to be clear that I'm not opposed to this completely. I just have additional questions and I certainly appreciate the work that Counselor Harpen has done on this. But I do have questions and I guess, you know, this is, I'm, you know, I'm working on a subcommittee, a policy subcommittee for MMA, specifically addressing this and, you know, these unfunded liabilities, you know, across the Commonwealth, which I indicated is a huge problem. And I realize, you know, the $15,000 may not be directly connected to, you know, the stipend may not be directly connected to the unfunded liabilities. But I think it's part of a bigger problem that the city is going to need to address. And I guess I would just like clear answers to the couple of questions that seem to be on the table before we vote on this, and I think, you know, that is in the best interest of everyone. And I guess, I mean, my question slash comment would be, you know, if we can have a clear opinion on this, I don't know if we need something from the solicitor or if there is an indication elsewhere in, you know, Mass General Law. I don't believe there's anything in our specific ordinances as to where this money actually is coming from. And if we could, you know, have that for review at the Finance Committee meeting or if the Finance Committee can report that back to the council when this returns, that, you know, that would be helpful.
Counselor Buddington.
I'm comfortable that I understand the funding mechanism. I would be happy to be corrected if I'm mistaken. As I understand it, the money comes in the short term from the funds controlled by the retirement board, but ultimately, because that will draw down their funds by a small amount, the city, and do other towns contribute to the, through, to the McCann system, for instance? Well, in any case, mainly the city will have to reimburse in the long run that same amount. So I'm comfortable with the approximation that the city will, on average, bear this $15,000 to $22,500 cost on average. So I think as far as policy goes, to me, that's the important number. That I understand it won't show up right away, but that certainly should be the long-term effect for the simple reason that the retirement board doesn't have other sources of income that I know of, so it would, we'd have to be the ones making it up. But I would also point out that out of our budget, this is a small amount going to, directly to people who are doing obviously effective work for the city based on the results they've shown.
Counselor Wilkinson.
Yeah, I don't, you know, I don't have a real problem with the amount of money. However, as Chairman of the Finance Committee, I have a problem with somebody presenting something that's going to be charged to the city that is not in our present budget and we haven't had a chance to look at the long-term ramifications of it. So again, it's, I just thought it was a done deal. It wasn't going to cost the city a penny. Tonight I find out, may cost us the city a penny and we don't have it in our budget. So I think it needs to go to Finance, just so we can answer some basic questions. Again, I'm not against the stipend. I just think we're not there yet.
Counselor Cohen then Counselor Harpen.
Can I just make the motion to refer this to Finance Committee?
Well, currently, there is a motion on the floor, so Counselor Harpen would either have to retract or amend her motion.
Yeah, I just would like to say first, there is no trickery here.
I didn't say there was.
So, you know, I think this was presented in a transparent way, as transparent as possible. And I also left a number with plenty of time for anybody to call Mr. Borak at PERC if they had questions. So there is no trickery. I do not believe that this is going to directly hit the budget for the city of North Adams. So what I can offer is to ask Mr. Borak if he would like to join us for a finance meeting. I had spoken to him and asked him that and he said it's not something that he normally does, but he certainly would be willing to come down if he had to. So I can certainly call him and invite him to one of our finance meetings or a city council meeting, whichever you prefer.
Any other counselors?
There's a motion on the table.
There is, but we also haven't heard from anyone in the audience yet either, so until someone, until Counselor Harpen either amends or retracts her motion, then it stands as this. Counselor Buddington.
I would, if it pleases the Council President, I would like to hear what the public has to say.
That's where I'm going.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that was in the pipeline.
Yes. Anyone from the public? We have Mr. Smith and then Mr. Cardamino. Your name and address for the record, please.
Yes, my name is Robert Smith and I live at 140 Pleasant Street. I'm getting kind of confused about this issue because I'm not certain whether it's coming out of the city budget or someone else is paying for it. Like Mr. Wilkinson said, I don't mind this being approved, but my concern would be that if it's coming out of the city budget and it hasn't been originally in the budget, that would be a concern that I would have, because my question would be, why wasn't this in the city budget originally? And the mayor's talking about something coming out of assessment. I really don't know what that means, Mr. Mayor? What the assessment means? Is that a line item on the budget?
Yes, I have you west to respond? Yes.
It is, okay. So I'm very confused. I think the idea now, we keep on postponing this item from meeting to meeting and it really needs to be resolved one way or the other because we're wasting time at the city council meetings on this one issue when we could be doing other things that's important to the residents of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cardamino.
Robert Cardamino, 173 Quincy Street. If this money is going to come out of the city budget, the council cannot increase the budget. They can cut the budget, they cannot increase it. So you can't get it out of the city budget, number one, if they do get it from the city budget. Number two, how many members on that committee? And number three, I'd like to see the number of the stipend that each individual is going to get that hasn't come out. You're telling percentage of this, percentage of that, when you're not sure what the percentages are. And I think the public has a right to know all of them three questions. Thank you.
Mr. Cardamino, the stipend would be between 3,000 to 4,500 per member.
Per member?
Per member.
Well, that opens the door for every other committee to ask for $3,500 for sitting on these.
Thank you.
Sitting on these committees.
Yes.
So where do you open the door and where do you close it?
Thank you.
I think that's a bit, a bit much, $3,500. That's a pretty good part-time job.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public? Yes.
Beth Mattson, 211 Obahooka Road. I thought I could perhaps clear up some of the appropriation questions for you. It won't take me long. So we do a funding schedule every two years. The last one we did for this year was $3,660,000. Now, it's projected out to 2028 where it falls off. It will be all paid up in that year. Every year, it's going to increase by four and a half percent. In January 19, we're going to do a new funding schedule. We'll get our new number and that will be increased by four and a half percent until it's paid off. So your budget, your city budget, is not going to increase by 15,000. It's not going to, it's going to increase by the four and a half percent of whatever that number comes to. What will happen is, in the end, it's either going to lengthen or shorten the schedule. Right now, you're scheduled to be paid off in 2029 and I think with the gains that we made last year, it will probably be shortened up about two years. So you will not see a direct effect. You won't see your 15,000 added to what you've already budgeted. It will come off in the end, up or down. Does that make sense?
Probably not. I don't know. I would say, I would say it's, there's still question marks, bubbles above the heads out here, so yes.
So I know typically, we don't.
Right.
Go back and forth, but may I ask a question for clarification?
Well, yes, I think to this member, yes.
Okay, all right. So through the chair, Ms. Mattson, so does any portion of the profit in the portfolio go to the reduction of the unfunded liabilities?
Absolutely, absolutely. So your normal cost is about 710,000. That's what it costs for our current employees, for their future retirement benefits. The bulk of the rest of that, the unfunded liability piece, is a million eight and some When they recalculate our funding schedule next year, they're going to take into consideration the 20% earnings that we made, so it's going to significantly lower the unfunded liability. All right?
Okay.
Then our expense is our budget, which is 300,000, which includes our money managers and all of that, will increase from 300 to 315. But with the unfunded liability being lowered so much, it's going to more than wash that out, right? Are you understanding?
Right. I understand. The problem is that I now have six questions I didn't have 45 seconds ago and it, we can't go back and forth now. So I, again, I don't object to the stipend per se, but I do have other questions and I just, I feel like for everyone's benefit, you know, we should probably have a more detailed conversation about this in the committee meeting. And this, and I should say, you know, I just want to say, we're not wasting time by dialoguing on this issue. I think it's very important. In this issue, we did get, you know, the survey back from the board members, but we never sent this to committee and that's, you know, the actual, or the best, best practice, the best process, you know, to have the committee refer it back to full council. But there are, you know, so I do have other questions.
Again, Again, Counselor Harpen, it's sort of, the ball is in your part. You have the ball at the moment that-
Okay.
You either, this will go to vote as is, or you can amend it to refer to Finance Committee if that is your wish. So if either, at some, yep, but we'll, still got some members out there. But I just want to let you know that when this, as is, right now, this goes to vote, it goes to as is. And, and if it fails, it can't come back.
Right. Okay. So I will amend to send to Finance Committee.
Okay. Do we have a second on the amendment?
Second.
This is only on the amendment? A second to the amendment?
Counselor Cohen.
Oh, did you? Oh, sorry. Okay. All in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? So right now, the motion is to amend this, to refer it to Finance Committee instead of adopting it at this point. Okay? All right. What's that? Oh, with a return date, so that's going to go to Finance Committee.
Yeah. I'm going to be away for a while. But it's a pressing issue. Let's try to arrange something for the next meeting. Is that, is that a grandiose thinking here, or?
How fast are you?
Well, I hate to think that city, city government moves so slow. I was hoping to speed it up a little.
The, um, part of that is, I know Counselor Harpen, you said the representative might be willing to come up and speak during that. So I don't know how much time they need, but-
Well, then, let's go two meetings.
That's the ninth of October.
Let's, no, I'm going to change that. Let's go the, the next meeting. We can't work it out. We can't. But I, I, again, this is an issue that's been, as gentlemen in the audience said, been hanging here too long, and it's time to, can't say that on TV. It's time to get it taken care of.
All right. So your amendment would have a return date of the next meeting.
September 25th.
Okay.
Okay. Hopefully.
I'll see what I can do to see if I can get the actuary here.
Well, we can be, we can be, you know, we'll work-
I don't want to extend it longer than we have to. Evidently, it's been a problem.
Can always do a conference call if we have to.
Okay.
Okay. Um, the, yes, thank you. Please. Name and address for the record, please.
David Whitney, 51 Blom Street. I was a little bit late. Just one question before I say, what is the unfunded pension liability? I missed that and a way down.
What, you want to explain that, Counselor LaFors?
Sure. So the unfunded pension liability is about twenty million dollars, and that, but, but, that doesn't include the unfunded OPEB liability, which is other post-employment benefits, which is probably equal to that amount. So we're probably looking at a forty million dollar unfunded liability.
Okay. Okay. That's been my question for the last three or four years. What's the unfunded pension liability? And I got an answer from the previous administration of eight million dollars or something. It wasn't close to forty.
Well, just, the pension, so the pension liability, to answer, the unfunded pension liability is twenty mil-, it may have been eight million dollars at that time.
This was two years ago.
Well, things-
You know, this is the thing. And keep on giving raises, and the previous administration, oh, it's only one percent. Yep, one percent a year, plus what your unfunded pension liability is, because you're not putting any money in for the pension, or not enough to cover all these raises. So I, I just, you know, I've been asking this question for three, four years now, and it's getting worse.
All right. Thank you. Counselor Buddington?
I just wanted to say, quite a while ago, I dropped by a retirement board meeting, I think just on a whim, because I didn't know what they did. And we don't have, I, I really suggest that any counselors who want more of a tutorial on it, that I found that Beth was, was very patient with my questions, because I don't know squat about economics. And also, the board members were also just, just really willing to talk. So I think if you, if any council members want a longer explanation, then you might get at a, at even a committee meeting. I just want to vouch for their, their friendliness and accessibility there.
Thank you. Any other counselor members, anyone else from the public? This is going to go to vote. Currently, the motion is to refer to the Finance Committee with a return date of the next meeting. Uh, this is a roll call vote. No, just don't need it because of referral. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Motion carries. Paper number eleven thousand seven hundred and four, Mayor's Communication Number sixty-six regarding Proclamation, Child Care, sorry, Childhood Cancer Awareness Month. Without objection, file the communication. Mayor?
Thank you. As I go forward, I would like to invite Joe and Kathy Arabia up to join me, if I may. I want to-
Thank you.
Thank you. And I want to acknowledge, before I introduce the proclamation, and invite them to say a few words with your indulgence. Their, their leadership and, and their work on the issue of childhood cancer over the, over the years, it is absolutely inspiring, and we are, we and people across the Commonwealth are lucky to have them in this fight. So with that, I will say, whereas individuals and families in North Adams, Berkshire County, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, our nation and the world have been touched by the effects of childhood cancer, and whereas childhood cancer is the leading disease-related cause of death in children, and whereas forty-three children in the United States are diagnosed with cancer every day, and whereas worldwide, a child is diagnosed with cancer every two minutes, and whereas every day, five children in the United States will die of childhood cancer, and whereas more than forty thousand children undergo treatment for cancer each year, and whereas childhood cancer treatments lead to more than ninety-five percent of childhood cancer survivors developing chronic health problems, with eighty percent of survivors experiencing severe or life-threatening conditions, and whereas although the five-year survival rate for all childhood cancers is now over eighty percent, there are still some childhood brain cancers with a less than one percent survival rate, and whereas despite these statistics, childhood cancer receives only four percent of federal cancer funding and is consistently underfunded by pharmaceutical, pharmaceutical companies. Now therefore, I, Thomas W. Bernard, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do hereby proclaim September 2018 as Childhood Cancer Awareness Month, and call on residents to support efforts to increase awareness of and support for childhood cancer research in order to provide more effective treatments and, and to work toward curing childhood and all cancers.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Bernard, and the city council, and so many in our community that have supported this fight with us. As many of you know, our daughter Anna was one of these staggering statistics that you hear about. She was actually in that one percent of brain cancer patients who, with a survival rate of less than one percent, I should state that way. It's a type of cancer that still does not have a cure, but we're fighting every day to make a difference, and we so greatly appreciate the fight that this community is in with us. We have received an unbelievable amount of support, and we're grateful for that every day. And we are fighting to make a difference. So we are already, we support research that's being done at Dana Farber. We've supported them with over a hundred thousand dollars' worth of research money that's going directly to doctors that we've met with, labs that we've toured, work that we know that's being done, that's been identified as the work that's going to make a difference. New discoveries are happening all the time. There are great increases in the survival rate for certain types of cancer, and we just need to continue until we hear that success rate for all children with, with cancer. So-
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I also want to mention that, so we go gold for Cancer Awareness Month this month. Mass Moca is going gold with the landmark upside-down trees, and the front will be lit gold, which we greatly appreciate. And if I can sneak in, we have an event on Saturday of Fall Foliage Weekend. We have a cornhole tournament that's being held at the Armory. And our goal, our plan, is to raise over ten thousand dollars to help local children. There are children locally in our community that we're supporting right now, as well as supporting the work that's being done at Dana Farber. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Paper number eleven thousand seven hundred and five, Mayor's Communication Number sixty-seven regarding a proclamation supporting Start With Hello Week. Without objection, file the communication.
And I would invite the superintendent to join me at the podium, please. Whereas Sandy Hook Promise is a national nonprofit organization led by several members whose loved ones were killed in the mass shooting at Sandy Hook Elementary School in December 2012, and whereas Sandy Hook Promise focuses on preventing gun violence and other forms of violence and victimization before it happens by promoting educational programs for youths and adults on mental health and wellness programs that identify, intervene, and help at-risk individuals, and whereas Sandy Hook Promise has identified social isolation, defined as the overwhelming feeling of being left out, lonely, or treated like you are invisible, as a risk factor associated with violent and suicidal behavior, and whereas young people who experience social isolation may become victims of bullying and violence, and may experience symptoms of depression, and whereas the experience of social isolation may cause young people to further pull away from their community, struggle with learning and social development, and/or choose to hurt themselves or others, and whereas Sandy Hook Promise developed the Start With Hello program to educate students in grade six through twelve in the skills they need to reach out to and include those who may be dealing with chronic social isolation, and to create a culture of inclusion and connectedness within their school or youth organization. And whereas the goal of the Start With Hello program is to help young people to build more connected and inclusive classrooms, schools, and communities, aligns with the mission and values of the North Adams Public Schools, now therefore, I, Thomas W. Bernard, Mayor of the City of North Adams, do hereby proclaim September 24th through 28th, 2018, as Start With Hello Week in the City of North Adams, and encourage all city residents to support the efforts of our students and educators in taking action to promote connectedness and inclusion in the North Adams Public Schools and throughout the North Adams community. Superintendent, thank you. Would you like to say a few words about the program?
Thank you, Mayor Bernard and Councilman. The Start With Hello Week is going to be a great opportunity for our community, not just our school community, but our community to really make an effort to reduce social isolation as a major cause of depression and leading to suicidal thoughts and tendencies. So we have a week of activities planned, and we're hoping that all of you, including our very brilliant city council, will get involved and join with us, as well as any other community member. On Monday, September 24th, we're going to wear green, and we're going to be using the Start With Hello curriculum in both our elementary schools and in our high schools. And at the high school, we'll also have the student council setting up a photo booth so that students can have their picture taken with their own Start With Hello message. On September 25th, we will be doing our Safe Roots to Schools annual walk in collaboration with Amanda Chilson and at the elementary schools. And then at the high school, our student council will be welcoming each student as they enter the building. On Wednesday, the 26th, we're going to have a Nobody Eats Alone Day. Lunchtime is often a time for feeling left out or feeling isolated, and so we're going to make sure that our students are aware of noticing those students who may be feeling that they have no one to eat lunch with, and to make sure that everyone has someone to eat their lunch with. Thursday is Compliment Day, and here's where everyone can participate. On September 27th, if we all took, made the effort to compliment as opposed to finding something to criticize, I think that that goes a long way to building a very positive community. And on September 28th, we're going to have a community welcome day, and we're looking for community members to sign up to be at each of our schools, to welcome our students as they come into the building that day, so that they know that Start With Hello is not just an expectation for how children interact with each other, but for how adults interact with each other as well. I think this is a great opportunity for North Adams Public Schools to participate in a nationwide event and help to reduce the incidence of isolation and bullying that we want to make sure that no child has to experience. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Paper numbers eleven thousand six hundred and seventeen dash one, Mayor's Communication Number sixty-eight, requesting a reappropriation of funds to complete armory repairs. Without objection, we'll file the communication and move through the order. Paper number eleven thousand six hundred and seventeen dash one, in order, re-appropriating the sum of ninety thousand from the original hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred for the purpose of repairs to the armory in accordance with Chapter forty-four of the MGL. Motion to adopt.
So moved?
Hopkins and Lamb?
Second.
And discussion. Mayor, do you want to speak on this?
Uh, sure. I'll, I'll reference the, the communication briefly. So this goes back to the, the borrowing order that the council approved last August in the amount of seven hundred eighty-three thousand nine hundred ten dollars. Part of that borrowing was about a hundred and seventy-six thousand, it was a hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred for inspections of two city dams. The, subsequent to the, to the borrowing, the state came through with the money for those dam studies, so those funds are available within the, within the amount that was borrowed to be re-appropriated. And we have a need within the work being done at the North Adams Armory to, to fund the, the completion of, of the work there. Within the bid, there was one alternate, which was the steps on the Porter Street side, which we can't fund within the, within the bid amount, but with these funds, would be able to complete that work and finish the exterior work that's planned for the armory.
Thank you. Discussion, yes. Counselor Lamb?
Um, I just had a question here, and it's probably just for clarification purposes. So the hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred that the state gave us specifically for the dams, has that work on the dams been done, then, for the inspection piece?
It's in process.
Okay. So the second part of my question is, the money, and I'm not against this per se, I'm just curious, that hundred and seventy-six thousand six hundred that we did borrow in the original seven hundred eighty-three nine ten, could that be re-appropriated to actually execute work that's going to likely be needed on the dam based on the inspection itself?
Without the results of the study and how much that's going to cost, I don't have a good answer for that.
All right. Counselor Moran?
Will this complete the armory?
It will substantially complete the armory. It will do everything but the, the lower, the lower garage, garage level, but everything from the, from the first floor up will be completed. And what these, these improvements are exterior, so it's the, the masonry on the facade and the, and the parapet, which needs to be rebuilt.
Is this the redoing?
This is the redoing of the, of the work that had previously been done that was not, that was not successful.
Counselor Buddington and Counselor Harpen?
If I may, through the chair to the mayor, approximately how much have we spent on the armory recently? With this, this overall project?
I would have to, I'd have to get you that, that number. I can, I can tell you, the, the bid for this project was, with the, with the alternate, which involves the steps, was about four hundred twenty thousand, most of that coming out of community development block grant funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Harpen?
Um, through the chair to the mayor, this is just a minor detail, I guess, important detail, I think. In the order, you mentioned Mass General Law, Chapter forty-four. Do you know what section that is?
I'd have to, I'd have to check on that. I don't have that.
Other counselors? Discussion from the audience. This is a roll call vote.
Yes.
Cohen?
Yes.
Harpen?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
LaFors?
Yes.
Lamb?
Yes.
Moran?
Yes.
Wilkinson?
No.
Fona?
Yes.
Motion carries. We have an application for a license to drive a taxi from RJ's Taxi, from Joel Cross, and we need a motion to grant.
Motion to grant, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Oppose? License granted. Another license, application to drive a taxi from Corey Baskin for, also RJ's Taxi, motion to grant.
Motion to grant?
Second. Buddington? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? License granted. I don't think we have any correspondence. Okay. Committee reports or minutes? We have Lamb and then Buddington.
So the Public Safety Committee met just the other day, so we do not have minutes yet to provide you. We will for the next meeting. That being said, we have been meeting about the gun range in a continued fashion based on the feedback from the council after the announcement of the proposed closure at the beginning of 2019. In that conversation, you know, prior to that, the Public Safety Committee had been very adamant that we weren't making any changes, we weren't changing the rules, we had no major suggestions to make to the full council, so it was just going to continue operating as such until we heard about the closure proposed. The committee is still strongly in support of maintaining the facility as it currently stands and is definitely pushing for the city as a whole to pursue alternative funding, or sorry, alternative insurance coverage for the space since we know that our current policy will not cover operations. And there was, a good conversation was had, there was a lot of, we actually had someone that provided us with a quote, which I believe most of us received via email from that individual a few weeks back. So there is coverage that's out there for gun ranges, so that there is an opportunity out there that I think we should continue investigating. And so the committee met, we, you know, I had mentioned to the mayor that that was the way the committee was going, and we are drafting a resolution that the committee will review before bringing it back to council, rather than bringing it to council and then sending it back to committee for review. We're just going to, we have another meeting scheduled on the 24th to actually review a draft resolution that we'll bring back, unless a resolution is nailed down before that document comes forward. So that's currently where we are with that, and so that was our meeting last week.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Buddington.
Yeah, I just want to summarize, the General Government Committee had a meeting last night to discuss the mayor's proposed changes to the Public Arts Commission ordinance, and we did pass some recommendations on the small details and decided that the Powers and Duties Section needed a deeper dive, so we will be having a future meeting to get into those details, but I will get a report on what we did last night to the full council within the next few days, I expect.
Thank you. Any other committee reports or minutes? Community, calendar, and events. Anyone want to take any thunder away from the mayor? Yes, Mr. Smith?
Robert Smith, again, 140 Pleasant Street, Mayor Bernard. I will only give, not details, I'll let you do that, but I will cite the two events right now. First of all, I just want to say that on Sunday, the 23rd of this month, is officially the start of autumn, which is a great time up here, as you all know, because we get a lot of colors. And in light of that, since it will be autumn, on the 29th, which is a Saturday in North Adams, we're going to have the Fall Foliage Dog Parade, which is going to be an event I haven't seen yet, so I'm anxious to see that. I'll bring my camera down and take a lot of photos. And then the next day, on the 30th, the Sunday, we're going to have the 63rd Annual North Adams Fall Foliage Day, which I saw last year, and I really enjoyed, again, I will attend that. Now, on that, the Sunday, the people who bring their dogs down on Saturday are welcome to participate in that parade as well. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, you can melk it to details.
Counselor Lamb and then Mr. Cardamino.
That just reminded me, and again, forgive me if I'm taking anyone's thunder away, this Friday, Northern Berkshire Community Coalition has their annual needs assessment meeting. It's going to be at the First Baptist Church from 10:00 a.m. till noon. This is an opportunity for the community to come and really give insight into what topics NBCC should be tackling for the year in terms of their regular forum schedule, so definitely worthwhile coming down, and they'll actually be hosting a coffee date at the Eagle Street Parklet prior to the actual forum itself. So, starting at 7:30 all the way through noon, you can spend your morning with Northern Berkshire Community Coalition and engage with that crew.
Mr. Cardamino?
Robert Cardamino, 173 East Quincy. In regards to the Fall Foliage Parade, I am going to suggest that they make sure that every dog that's in that parade has a license.
Well, this is just for listing the events right now. You can bring that up in open forum, or you already said it. You already said it.
Oh, wait a minute, where's the?
He listed the event. He mentioned the event.
That's one of the events.
Yes, okay, yes, he listed the event.
Okay, that's one of the events, the Fall Foliage Parade.
Yes.
And the dogs in there should be licensed.
Okay.
You know, that's one way to get the people to license their dogs, because there's dogs out there with no licenses, and the city clerk will attest to that.
All right, thank you. Any other counselors? Did you have one? For, this is listing an event.
Yeah, Henry Yaski, 62 Chase Ave. I just want to let everybody know, this is fresh grass weekend coming up, and also there's a festival up at Adams Aggie Fair the next following weekend. That's music. Thank you.
Thank you. So I was probably going to say that along with the mayor, that it is fresh grass weekend. It is also unofficially, it's not an official city event, but there is a citywide tag sale, I believe, going on this Saturday. So I would just encourage people to drive careful because I'm sure some streets are going to be condensed, there's going to be some that will have some people riding around the city lost, so just be patient. And, Mayor, oh wait, actually, yeah, so, sorry, we're on to open forum. Anyone for open forum? Yes, Mr. Cardamino, let's do Mr. Cardamino first this time, then Mr. Smith, then Mr. Urban.
You know, I'm very disturbed about what's happening in this country. First, we got the athletes bending a knee and not respecting the National Anthem, and right in this city council chamber, we have people that are refusing to say the pledge. You know, that is an insult to every veteran in this country, and especially when you use the Constitution and First Amendment for those rights and then refuse to say the pledge. And if they don't want to say the pledge in this council meeting, I suggest, Mr. President, you ask them to step outside while the pledge is being said. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Smith?
Yes, Robert Smith, reside at 140 Pleasant Street. I just want to make mention about one more event that's not in North Adams, but is in Clarksburg, and it's not this month, but it's in October, it's a hayride that will be taking place in Clarksburg, and I would suggest that anybody who's interested to relating information to other people, bring your children up there, I understand it's a very good event. This was posted up at the Medical Center on Hill where I volunteer. And one more thing I just want to mention, I'm becoming very popular around here because people come up into the Medical Center for their services with their doctors, and they're recognizing me. "Oh, you're the man that speaks at the city council meetings." But the problem I have with some of these people is they constantly now complaining to me about things going, in their view, wrong with the city here, and I relay back to them, "Well, if you have any issues with the city, you should really come to the council meetings, as I do, and express your point of view and see if that would help." Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Urban?
Roger Urban, Action Street, North Adams. I'm sure that everyone here is familiar with the beautiful area known as the Veteran Memorial that we have down across from the, what used to be the St. Francis Church. Adorning the wall of this memorial are plaques listing veterans' names from World War I through the present conflicts. However, there is a significant item missing there, and that's a listing of all of our veterans, from an Indian attack on Fort Massachusetts, the Revolutionary War, the War of 1812, the Civil War, and the Spanish-American War. We have nothing. Working with Steve Roy, our Veterans Officer, we're seeking volunteer help for an appropriate monument for our veterans, numbering over 400. Excuse me. We're asking for designs for such a memorial, and we'd like to have public input from the schools or anybody else that has an artistic flair that might think of an appropriate design. And I think it's proper to do this. If you look at the Vietnam Veterans Wall, that was designed by an artist, so it can be done. This will probably be placed on the west end of the area that we now use as a veterans' memorial, there's plenty of room there, and we think it's fitting and proper to honor all of our veterans. So if you're interested in this, give me a call, drop me a line, I'd be happy to talk with you about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for open forum? Not hearing any others, we will move on to the mayor's concerns.
Thank you. I'll mention a few events, I'll thank Mr. Smith for bringing up the parade at the end of the month. I want to start with next Thursday with the Walk a Mile event in Pittsfield. This is the eighth annual event to benefit the work of the Elizabeth Freeman Center. It's part of Pittsfield's Third Thursday program. I'll be walking in the event, as I know will many others from the city. We've had some important and some difficult conversations about domestic violence in the city since the beginning of the year, will continue to do so, including at the October Northern Berkshire Community Coalition Forum, but this is another way to show support and solidarity for the work of the Elizabeth Freeman Center and to show support and solidarity for survivors and victims of domestic violence. On another note, the Friends of the Library Book Sale will be held Friday and Saturday, September 21st and 22nd, that's from 9:00 to 4:00, at the St. Elizabeth Parish Center. It's always well-attended, it supports a great cause. The Friends of the Library raise funds to provide programming and equipment to supplement what is included in the city budget. I want to offer thanks to the city clerk and the assistant clerk, and to the election wardens and inspectors for the work that they did on the primary election last Tuesday. The wardens and inspectors were appointed by the council back in August. This was the first election in which the city used the new voting machines that were approved for purchase by the council back in April. I talked to the clerk after the primary election, and she mentioned that there was a representative from the vendor on hand just to make sure that everything worked well this first time out, and the clerk also mentioned that the representative was highly complimentary about how smoothly the election ran and what a great team of election workers we have, so I want to acknowledge the work of everyone in the city, as well as the crew in public services who helped set up, the members of the North Adams Police Force who are on-site as well. The council president began the meeting acknowledging that this is the 17th anniversary of the September 11th attacks. I had the opportunity this morning to join city first responders in a brief memorial remembrance. That was the fire, the police, the EMS, and dispatchers. During that, what we heard was an acknowledgement of the first responders who served, as well as all of those who lost their lives on September 11th, but it also acknowledged the service that our local first responders provide to our community every day, and I want to acknowledge that, and I also want to acknowledge, in that vein, the passing of Officer Molly, the city's first K-9 officer, who was laid to rest last week. The North Adams Police Department provided a lovely tribute to Officer Molly on Facebook. If you haven't had a chance to read that, I would recommend it. Molly served the city for many years, she was trained in narcotics detection, was also a fixture in the local public schools. We all appreciate that in police work in general, but certainly the relationship among K-9 officers and their handlers, that's a deep and powerful partnership, and that was especially true for Molly and her handler, Sergeant Alzoido. And Sergeant Zoido cared for Molly following her retirement from the force, and I want to thank him for that, I want to thank his wife, Paula, for providing loving care to Molly, and I want to offer thanks to Molly on behalf of the city and the members of the community that she served.
Thank you. Liaison updates and counselors' concerns. Counselor Lamb and Counselor Harpen?
So this one is, was, I actually had hoped to get it on the agenda for this week, but the holiday threw me off, and so it ended up coming in late, but I just wanted to mention it, so there may be potential for some action prior to a formal referral. There's been some concerns raised to me about speeding on, well, not necessarily speeding, but the speed limit issue on the one-lane part of Eagle Street in downtown, specifically folks traveling early in the morning between 6:00 a.m. and 8:00 a.m., going extremely fast, and so there was just, these were concerns raised by a few folks, and so there will be a formal communication coming forward at the next meeting, but if there's any way that the city can talk to the Traffic Commission prior to then, that would be wonderful.
Counselor Harpen?
Yeah, I have something positive here. I just want to give kudos to the mayor because I recently read his North Adams Notes. It's a monthly publication that he puts in, and there's really some great information out here, so I would recommend to the public to take a look. I believe it's on the North Adams City website, under the mayor's page, and there's some great information. One that I noted myself was the city receives $8,800 from the state recycling dividends program, which I thought was fantastic, and they're going to be using that money for a swapping shed at the transfer station, which I think is fantastic. So, like I said, there's great information on here, and he does it every month, so take a look on the city website and look up the mayor's monthly bulletin.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Yes, Counselor LaForest and Counselor Cohen?
So I just want to bring up the crosswalk, about which we had a lengthy conversation in our last meeting, and there was a, Director Casalio was here, maybe the mayor can speak more to this, and there was a suggestion that some signs could be posted at that intersection temporarily, ahead of a long-term decision on that intersection and the question of a crosswalk, and in the two weeks since that conversation, there have been no signs and no indication that anything was moving forward, so I don't know if the mayor can offer an update quickly?
If he wishes to.
If he wishes to. He certainly doesn't have to.
Very briefly, this will be coming back at the next meeting. The issue with the signs, and we can, this can be raised as well, also was related to bus stop issues, and talking with the bus company, there actually are not crossing issues related to the bus issue at that intersection.
Counselor Cohen?
I just want to make a comment that with events that happen at Mass Moca and how big fresh grass is going to be this weekend, there's lots of positive things that go with that, but the obvious negatives that come with that, as somebody who resides here, so I just want to remind people that this event is bringing friends, family, visitors, but most importantly, it's bringing money and opportunities for businesses in this area. So I urge people in the city to plan accordingly for traffic, for parking, and for our friends that are going to be coming to this festival, because it's a great opportunity for people and businesses, and also the farmer's market, which will be on Center Street this Saturday, it does relocate, and I know that it does fantastic the weekend of festivals, so please plan accordingly.
Counselor Buddington?
I just wanted to relay, I'm a liaison to the Traffic Commission. It looks as though the Traffic Commission will not meet before our next meeting, there was the sense that since the engineering study is ongoing, that there wasn't a thing to say, but feel free to communicate with the Traffic Commission about that. to say, but feel free to communicate with the traffic commission about that.
Any other councilors' concerns? Yes, Counselor LaForest.
Point of information, this council referred something to the traffic commission with a return date, so I'm curious who then schedules that beyond the return date to the council?
It would just get postponed, so it will come back, and it will get postponed. I mean, it's happened before when commissions or committees can't meet, don't meet, whatever, but, so it will come back and have to be postponed to the next meeting.
This is a very long process for something that was voted on three years ago.
Thank you. Councilors, any else? Licenses? Oh, we did the licenses, went backwards. Well, correspondence and motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Meeting adjourned.